This conference will now be recorded.
And I'll ask you to start with the political regions. By the political regions, to the black of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and I welcome everybody this evening. Ahead of the store. Everybody should have their snow shovel and plow and maybe we'll get some snow. With no one addressing the board tonight, so we'll move right into section two of the agenda. The village board meeting minutes of the last meeting in January 19th are in your packet. Unless there are omissions or corrections needed, I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented by Anita. So, Peter, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, minutes are done and accepted. The next item we have is really a pretty significant item. It is the reverse betterment agreement resolution, which will memorialize the commitment of the New York State Department of Transportation to reimburse the village for certain improvements that are outlined in the Main Street Reconstruction Project. And those improvements, in a general sense, recognize the cost of restoring the traffic lanes as part of that project. The significant part here is that the New York State Department of Transportation is appropriating the sum of $2,970,000 that will be made available to cover the cost of their participation in that construction project. And then further, and this is what we're seeking this evening with this resolution, it's authorizing the construction work and resolving that the mayor of the village of Lake Placid be and is hereby authorized to execute all necessary agreements, certifications, or reimbursement requests on behalf of the village of Lake Placid with New York State DOT in connection with the implementation of the project and reimbursement of the approved costs associated with the state betterment. And once this resolution has been passed by this board this evening, it will then be filed with the New York State Commissioner of Transportation and attaching it to any necessary agreement in connection with the project that may be required. This has been, this was sent a week ago to Ivan, to Brad, and to Janet for review. I believe, as far as I understand, it's passed muster all the way across the board. It's not a document that we have opportunity to change unless we found something in there that was contrary to what our understanding was. So with that said, you all have a copy, I believe, of the resolution in your packet. I would ask for a motion adopting the resolution. It's Art and Peter, further discussion on the resolution.
To make it clear that this money is that the village will pay and be reimbursed by state. Reverse betterment.
That's, that is correct. This, if you recall, a few years ago, we did the Trump sewer line project, and there's a section of highway between Lisa G's Restaurant and Land Lumber Company where we went, where we ran the sewer lines under the, under the state highway. And the state did the same thing with that, and this basically has the same structure to it. We basically, our contractor does the work, we pay the contractor and submit the approved portions of the project to DOT for reimbursement.
We may have cash first, then credit, $2.9 million. There's a payment way to the state.
Well, keep in mind, keep in mind that that won't all be paid out at once. Paid off over the life of the project.
And Ivan did email me today, he got clarification that we can use it as part of our match for our portion of the contribution on the GIGP grant.
Keep in mind that the traffic lanes are in the later end of the project because the first things that have to happen are the infrastructure underneath the road, your water lines, stormwater systems, and the payment goes back after those things are in place. So in terms of cash flow, this money will be coming, and the, that exposure to those payments will be coming later in the project.
At some point, they become.
But also, I believe, I believe, just as was done before, that this can be done as progressive payments.
Yep.
Which means what?
Which means that we don't have to wait until the end of the bill for it.
Okay.
So that covers our cash exposure.
I agree.
And actually, it's a big help, a huge help. We will have, I met with Ivan Friday, and we will have a spreadsheet done, which will show all the various grant sources, the budget for the project, and how all of those will play out. So we should be looking for that probably the next, within the next few weeks.
It's going to happen to me in the next couple of days. And then I will then incorporate that into the project accounting portion of our accounting software, so we can see how much we've spent on each as we go.
I think, I think the good thing is, from what, from what little bit, he actually has, has completed it before the reverse betterment was known to the village, so it's easy revising it. But it will give you all, I think, an opportunity to fully understand the financing of this and how it all fits into the total contract budget of roughly $10 million. Any further comments, questions on this resolution?
No, I look forward to the spreadsheet. This has been a, it's a long process where a lot of time has gone by and where the money comes from and where it's received. It'd be nice to refresh ourselves on that.
We will have, and again, these, these are all interrelated, so in fact, as Mindy just said, there, there, we, there's certain grant funds that we have where there's a match required in the village, we've always known that. And what we're, what we've just received notification from is some of these funds are available to, to apply toward those match requirements. So again, it's good news for the village, and this project is, is, at this point, I would say it's probably only about two months away from being started. I believe with this completed, we will probably see the next thing, we'll see DOT, it'll be a pre-construction meeting, I believe, February.
Seventeenth or eighteenth.
Seventeenth or eighteenth.
Or the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth. Twenty-fifth is, well, it's the twenty-fifth, but I think we'll have some preliminary information ahead of that. But, and the work permits should be forthcoming at the same time.
I think this is a step towards that permit. This is Janet, I'm sorry, I can't, I have to participate by phone. And Anita, you and I'll get together because when the agreement goes into the state, there's a laundry list of attachments that have to be included with that.
Okay.
I think you sent that to me, but we'll go over it.
Yep.
Yes, there is a, there is a package of documents that are with that resolution. So if there's no, unless there's further comments or questions, this is a pretty significant piece of news for the village. I would ask for a vote, bring it to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? And the mayor votes as well. Next item I'm going to ask Anita to speak to, it's a couple of updates that, under labor law, were required to add to our employee handbook, and I'll have Anita just describe where we're at with that process, if you would.
Yeah, this came up because of, because of the other policy that we are all, that we're working on to be done by April 1st. But our, the people who did our handbook the last time said that this is now a state requirement, actually has been for about a year, but they considered it minor enough that it could get by. But since we are reworking our book anyway, they, they suggested we include it, and it's just a policy on reproductive health decision making. The bottom line of it being that any choices our employees make, they cannot have any retribution against them over choices that they make on their personal reproduction.
I wouldn't think that's already a law.
You would think, yeah.
It's, it's, the, the other part of this that you need to know is that our inventory of employee handbooks to hand out to new hires is just about exhausted. The initial inventory that we, we acquired was all done with spiral binders, which at the time probably was.
Seemed like a good idea.
Seemed like a good idea, and Paul Ellis's mind, but we've already had a couple of situations where, where the handbook has to be updated. So along with this authorization tonight to amend the handbook, we will, we will be securing a new inventory of these because we have to have them. So, but I believe they're going, we're looking to do them in a manner where we can insert changes without having to replace the whole binder or not have a way to amend the binders as such. What will happen for the existing employees with respect to this particular labor law revision is that they will receive a, I believe, a separate notification and along with the appropriate documentation to add to their manual, so we don't have to replace every manual in the village. Is that?
Can we, oh, certainly. Can we offer them just a PDF, an updated PDF version, or do they, we physically have to give them, or do we have to give them a physical copy for them to sign? Or can we just give them a PDF and have them sign?
The difficult thing here is that not everyone, not all our employees have village email. It's not like in the school where I know every single teacher, assistant, custodian, everybody has an email. We simply don't. So in the past, we have always handed things out, that way we know everybody gets it. Like we handed, I handed the managers, they make sure it's distributed to their departments.
Do, we put it on the website, just in case they want to download it or access it?
We haven't yet, but I suspect that that will be one of those things Kate is probably going to suggest, because I think that the town, actually, that's one place where the town is a little bit ahead of us. I believe they have all their policies on their website, we do not. So I think that's one of those things Kate working on down the line.
Makes sense.
So if we can have a, a motion to approve the employee handbook update, New York State Labor Law Section 203E is the required update. So, Art?
Second.
Jason, the second, or Scott? Peter?
I think all of us.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that will be taken care of, thank you. And then item D, under clerk, this year again, as we did last year, there's a request from the Lake Placid High School, asking us for approval to hang banners, which will have each of the graduating high school members. You may recall that was done last year. We did that and did not charge for the hanging of the banners, which is a deviation from normal. And then at the end of the time, when the banners were taken down, they were, I believe they were given to each of the graduating seniors. So I, I fully support that, I, I think it's a wonderful gesture, whether we're in a virtual COVID environment or not. I think it's, I think it was popular, and I think, I think people enjoyed seeing that. So, Art?
Second.
Peter, any further discussion or comment or question?
I, I think, even though, you know, obviously being optimistic that we'll have a high school ceremony, it's always nice to have those banners up as well, even in addition to the ceremony or in lieu of the ceremony, depending on how things play out in the next six months.
Well, as it turned out last year, they got both the ceremony and the banners, which was, which was good, but I, I just think it's, it's, it's a nice acknowledgement, the only deviation from our standard banner policy really is that we're not, we're not collecting the cost of the $25 a banner to hang and remove them. So I would ask, I would ask that, that that be included as part of the motion. No further discussion? We'll call a motion, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that's passed. Anything else, Anita, tonight?
That's all.
Pretty short agenda here, really. Under pressure items?
Okay. Um, I'll throw in my little additional. I just included tonight, and I emailed it to those who are remote, actually, I didn't email it to everybody, just our bank reconciliation, that's our collateral statement. You'll know one thing, because my transfer didn't go through until after they pulled the totals, we paid out a huge lump sum for buyouts, health insurance buyouts, and we didn't calculate it to the penny, so it overthrew the account. But the transfer went in before the end of the day, so there were no fees or anything contributed to it, it just happened, on the same day that they told it.
On the payroll account.
Yes. But, we didn't charge anything, anything for it, everything else is fine.
I think we briefly talked about it a couple of weeks ago on the audit, A U D. It's all.
Yep.
Can you give us your guess on this one?
We started uploading stuff this week, that's when my portal opened, so today being the first day. It could take a month, it could take less than a month, but it should be done by March first.
When you say portal, that means you send specific information?
Yep, they, they send me a list of everything that they need, and then I send them, or I upload the PDFs to them. When they get a chance, whoever's working on that pod, they call it, pulls the information, looks at it, if it works, then it gets a little checkmark that it's approved. If they need additional information, then I get an email back that says, need additional information, and we just keep going, round and round. If they have questions, they email me.
They, you're referring to?
Um, there's, there's a whole slew of them down there, because they all work remotely right now, so they're all, it's nice when they come up here because they can kind of bounce ideas off each other, whereas when they work from home, it's you in front of your computer and you just pick whatever pod you want. But they closed B S T's office for now because they had a big, not outbreak of COVID, but they had a lot of people that were exposed at one time, so everyone currently is working remotely. I think the office was supposed to open either this week or next week, Jonathan had stated when I spoke with him, so.
It's like one person do water, another one does general, or?
No, um, the, the way the audit works is, they ask for, everybody gets a copy of the trial outs, and then they work off the trial outs. So they might pull samples from our accounts payable, so I send copies of those, they look through to make sure everything dives within. They may ask for a copy of my general ledger so that they can see where the bill hit, just to verify that it went where it was supposed to go and it came out of the cash account and reconciled. They'll ask for copies of certain bank statements, they'll ask for the sheet for the full year. They may ask for, they ask for all of our bond information for the year to verify that. Just little nitpicky things, so they all work off the same trial outs, so they can see when somebody else has made an adjustment, and they'll pull what, it'll show that they're working on it, so that nobody else within that pod can work on it, and they'll update their sheet as it goes. So it's, it's little pieces of information that make up the audit of our, our overall trial outs.
The A U D report is, obviously, that's, that's a requirement annually by the Office of State Controller where it's filed, and then following that, generally, we would, E S T would complete, complete an audit of the village books for the fiscal year ending, which in this case was July 31st of 2020. Just so that we keep that in front of everybody, it's an important piece of work, thank you for that. Anything else?
No.
Other than that, then we'll, we'll pick up the bill payment, the affidavit number 12 of the current budget year anticipates the payment of bills totaling $397,008.06. I would be happy to read the detail if anyone wishes. The bulk of it, 235,000 of it is coming out of the general fund, 90,000 out of electric, 23 out of water, 19 out of sewer, rounding these numbers, and 30 out of capital, out of the capital. You all have detailed information on, on each of those bills, is there any question? If not, I have a motion authorizing the payment of these bills as submitted.
Aye.
Peter? Is there a second?
Jason.
Jason? Paul in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. There it is. Okay, anything else under pressure items?
No.
If not, anybody have any item, I have nothing under no business to bring up. Actually, I do. And it's a late item, but it was brought up as compliments of our deputy mayor, and it has to do with the upcoming village election on March 16th. Question was posed to, to the village clerk as to whether the village would, would send out absentee ballots to all voters, and typically what we would, what we would be doing at this point is sending absentee ballots out to those individuals that would request them, which typically happens every, every time we have a village election. With, with the added information that for anyone who might be uncomfortable with respect to coming into this room to physically vote, would be able to request an absentee ballot by virtue of the pandemic issues that we're all dealing with. But after discussion with Anita, I thought it would be a good topic for us to have an open discussion on this evening, because really it's a board decision as to whether we treat it as, as, as normal, or treat it as sending out absentee ballots to every registered voter in the village, or whether we do a hybrid, which is what I just outlined, which is we send it out to those people that request it, but make it known that they can request one by virtue of the pandemic conditions that we're all living under. So with that said, I certainly would open it up to discussion.
How do they request one, just all in either?
Yeah, or, or my preference is emails so that I see, like, the actual name, address, so I have a record of it. Essex County actually makes people fill out an application, we don't do that, but I, I do take by phone because we don't have a written policy on this, but my preference is to have something in writing from the person requesting it.
I need to point out, separate email accounts is for that? For your, for your purposes?
No, I, I don't think so.
Anita, what would be the logistical turnaround for, if you were to say you were going to get maybe 20 to 75 of requests, how, what would be the, how, I guess, cumbersome would that be? Would you need any sort of assistance to process that and get those out in the mail?
Oh, no, not for 20 to 75, that, I mean, that wouldn't be a big deal at all.
What threshold would, would, would it reach? We're anticipating maybe 800 people voting.
Right.
What would be the threshold where you would say, okay, I would need some help, it could be done, but I would need some help?
Right, I, I honestly would have to give that some thought, but I, you know, we would, we would make it happen. I have Tracy at my disposal as well, right now, it helps, yeah, and, I mean, we all pitch in here, so it's not like we have to bring any outside help in. I'm, I'm put in the office could do it, I think my and the mayor's bigger concerns are just the cost of sending it to everyone when we don't think that everybody would then send it back anyway. We think it would be a pretty big cost, or we're not sure what return. And then on top of that, I spoke to Essex County, so the ones that are mailed in to me, they can't go through the machines, so we're, we'd be back to hand counting on the night of the election, which of course is doable, but I, I've had some coroners express to me that they, well, I think we said in this administrative meeting last week, we like the accuracy of the machines, we like the speed of the machines, we'd like to note 9:05 on election night who has been elected. We won't have that if we get, you know.
Yeah, the absentee ballots have to be held until the polls close at 9:00 PM, and then would have counted by the, I guess, the four inspectors, it would be better to, before we would have any known result at all, whereas if we have, and, and again, the, because the absentees can't be scanned through the machine, we, we will have, I suspect, a machine vote and also an absentee ballot vote, but we'll have to wait for those to be counted. There's no way of knowing whether 10% or 50% or 90% of the absentee ballots nailed out are actually going to be returned, so we have no way of measuring that. So therefore, I, I think Anita and I felt that this was a good topic for the board to deliberate and, and make a decision that we can publish to the community as quickly as possible.
I did see the.
I asked that question.
Oh, yes, Janet, sorry.
If, how do you know, if you're going to decide who to, to mail out en masse, how do you know who to mail to? And don't you open yourself up to criticism if you fail to send one to somebody? I, I think that's a real danger, as opposed to putting out and being proactive in seeking people to, to apply, because I think you could be very guilty if you, and charged with an act of omission if you don't send it out, if you miss people.
I'm not too concerned about that because Essex County is providing the list. My list would be exactly who is a registered voter, and if they're not, then that's on them, not on me or on Essex County. You know, can we prove it that we said something? No, but, but I still think, I, I'm not so worried about your first concern, I'll put it back on. It's not like I'm going to send out.
I guess my only concern is generally those who are, who utilize the absentee, are older generation that might not have access to email, they generally have, in the past, maybe have just called the office and asked.
We would make it happen, I would not tell anybody, no, you can't, I won't take your name.
If they can call, they call you.
I'm just saying, my preference is something, I know for accuracy, I have their name, their results all well, but, but we would, of course, any polls too.
Okay, okay, just, I, I would think that we wouldn't want to put a barrier up to those who would most likely utilize those, that, that avenue.
I think one of, we had, Anita and I had a conversation, and it's also.
I think one of we had Anita and I had a conversation, and it's also worth noting that we really have three weeks till February twenty second. Then we really can wait and see what happens. I mean, we just don't know. I mean, the pandemic could really take a turn for the worse the next two or three weeks, and it might make our decision up for us. But we have the luxury of that three weeks. That's that's half the time between now and the election.
Plus, we have another meeting this month yet.
Right. Things go off the rails, the governor's telling everyone to stay at home. We have that ability in three weeks' time to make this decision, pull the trigger.
Although also, I think if we got that, the governor would postpone like he did last.
That's correct. But it was going to be.
Has anyone has anyone mailed a letter yet recently?
Have to run for six more months, for goodness sakes.
Has anyone mailed a letter recently? It it takes a little while, much substantially longer than it has in the past. It hasn't quite fixed. The postal service hasn't quite got back up to speed after what happened. So I know that there is a perception that we have a a cushion of several weeks, but people are just receiving Christmas cards.
Right, well, no, Art's point was the ballots will not be made up until February twenty second, like following the calendar. Like, I don't even, as of today, right, exactly. Janet is running because the petitions are still coming in over the next week, so so it's not that we're putting off sending out the ballots, but they wouldn't even be ready to send for a few more weeks. So that's why Art's going to have that cushion to make the decision.
I'm I'm speaking from my from my own point of view. I I I'm inclined to feel that that we should conduct this election as as normal, as normal as possible, but publish the fact that anyone who feels uncomfortable should and and is encouraged to request an absentee ballot and and that request will be honored.
Makes sense to me.
I mean, I would put it on Facebook. I would put it on our website, and I'm hoping I don't know if Liz is on tonight, but certainly I'd speak with her to put something in the enterprise about it.
I would I would think that the the paper picked up on on a similar conversation a week ago in the village of Sarnac Lake, and they they, I think, effectively tabled it for their next meeting. But but I I I actually feel that regardless of we can send out all the, we can send out to all the registered voters an absentee ballot, we still have to have this room. The one thing we perhaps and and you never know is that we're also paying for for the voting machines, so if 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 that, we're going to diminish substantially the number of physical voters coming in here, I I guess we might scratch our heads a little bit about that cost.
I think we should try to be as safe as possible and send them out to everybody. We I think we should encourage everybody to do it absentee and try to limit the number of people coming in.
I'm I'm for either, so it makes sense, whatever the board wants.
Just from my own personal experience of having to deal with this and I just in the new variant that's coming out, I I think we should be as proactive as possible to try to keep people from coming to vote in person, as much as I'm against that, but it's just, I think, from a safety standpoint, that's the right thing to do.
Peter, your thoughts?
Well, I I like voting in person, and if we send it out to everybody, then.
You still have the option of voting in person.
The election commissioners, whoever's working, would have to make sure that they didn't vote in person and vote by mail.
That's going to be a that's going to be.
To find out who won. Is that really a problem? I don't know.
Seems to me you would have to take the voter registration list and literally go down through.
With each ballot.
With each ballot and check them off. I I I'm not sure that.
A little extra work is worth saving somebody's life.
No argument there, that's for sure. Art?
Well, as I said, we have three weeks before we even make this decision, so it's time to think about it, see how the pandemic's going, if the numbers are going up or down.
What is the earliest idea that the ballots could be printed?
So in the in the handbook that Nikon sends out, they talk about February twenty second as a date that I should have my ballot ready for all people on the ballot to review. So assuming they even, you know, if I was able to catch everybody that day, they all signed off on it, it would be the following day that they went to the printer. Phoenix Graphics and and Essex County is now involved too. It's an extra step because of the machines. They have to they have to improve it because we're using their machines. So I think we'd pretty much push it to the last week in February that we'd be mailing.
I think I I I think one thing we could do with this topic is we can table it to the meeting, the board meeting of the fifteenth. The latest date that anyone can turn in a a petition to run for office for the village is February ninth, as I recall, so between the ninth and the twenty second, there's time enough to present it, but actually, we could go a week week shorter than that. Between the ninth and the fifteenth, we would know what that ballot is going to have on it.
Sending everyone an absentee ballot and keeping people out of here. I think we also have to go there with the governor's stance is on this. If the governor is saying, yes, you can hold an election and have people show up, the county's saying the same thing. I don't think we should be telling the people they can't do it if the governor says they can. It shouldn't be a big factor involved unless we really feel that there's a a need to really protect their health and taking a turn for the worse. The governor's saying you can hold elections and people there. Kind of hard to keep people out.
Sorry, from the sixteenth of February through a month later, that's quite a bit of time. He might change his mind.
That's right. And that's why I say we've got three weeks. Long as it happens in three weeks, we don't know.
We don't have to do anything today.
Well, at least we have two weeks.
Well, until the twenty second, right? It's three weeks.
But in order to from a practical standpoint, a pretty who prints those?
Phoenix Graphics.
Right, but they can't print it until they know who's on the ballot. That happens on the second.
And then it has to get to me. I mean, they ship it to me, so.
So back to a question that Peter had, just as a side note, do the ones that they print have the scanner on them?
They they will print two. There's there's the ones that will go through the machine and the ones that will be mailed.
Oh, okay, because I was going to say if it came back with a scanning code on it, it would take care of that situation if somebody double voting. If they tried to scan it in twice.
Yeah.
I didn't know. Yeah, and and they're okay to scan in because we'll be doing a hand count of all the ones that are walked in, mailed in.
You just have to cross reference.
Exactly, exactly. I mean, you can find out from Sarnac Lake what it costs them to do this, and I can also find out how successful they felt it was in the fall. See, they had sort of a reverse situation of ours. We just had one uncontested race in the fall, so we just did our regular election knowing that we'd have very few people coming out for it. I think Sarnac Lake had a few trustees, like it was a much bigger deal, so they had to. Now they have the reverse. They have one uncontested position, and we have a whole slate of potentially contested races, so I could just find out from them how successful they felt it was, like what percentage of people actually mailed them that.
I think that would be.
Can we just encourage? Can we just encourage people to apply for an absentee ballot over the next couple of weeks to see if to gauge any interest in it? Maybe that might help give us enough information to see which way we should go. If there isn't much interest, then.
Well, I think I think we can do that, Jason, up until the next board meeting of the of the fifteen. No question about that. But and and you know, let's face it, the other piece of the information that you should all know, Anita and I hit meet with the town supervisor and town clerk town safety officer Rose to and and had a discussion about even the fact of use of the building for the village election, because currently the building is locked down. And I believe that the conclusion was the building would be open. Because we have we have to protect the people in that are in their offices during that course of that day, known until nine. However, we will probably have, I'm guessing, to address the mask and social distancing and hand sanitizer conditions, and we conceivably, if we had a large crowd of people at at certain hours of the day, you might see people out on the out in the elements of weather. So there is, there there certainly is some motivation for wanting to keep people safe, that's for sure. And at the same time, maybe to try to keep the number of people that would would have to gather to a to a controlled number or a number that minimizes as as much as possible those related risks.
We just have to think that the the last election twelve years ago, when there was three mayoral candidates and four plus trustee, there were it was over eight hundred votes, so you have to think eight hundred people, just say maybe even a hundred are absentee, that's still seven hundred people going through the building and I know that's that might be a cause of concern for some, so. That's I would just encourage my opinions, encourage them now over the next two weeks to apply and get them out and see how see how that works.
Right.
Well, then the way we might leave this is that we would we would, starting starting with this evening and tomorrow, we would we would encourage that process, but indicate at the same time that there's consideration to be given to a a mail out of absentee ballots to the to the entire registration list. That I I don't know if that'd be confusing for people, but obviously, if they request one and we mail them out to everybody, we're going to catch them all. Unless they're not on that list. And I think the the voter list, Anita indicated she would hold, she would delay as long as is reasonably possible to get as many people on the list as as possible, and I I don't know if Elizabeth Town could 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 alert you to any additional registration.
Of course they could, because I doubt there's that many people pouring into Lake Placid to register for the first time, so.
And I doubt they can get physically, they don't get into that office over there yet. It's all got to be by virtual transmission.
And if it's a smaller amount than having them mail, but having a drop off, is that something that is logistically possible? So they don't have to come into the building nor mail it, even though it's within the village, so it should be relatively quick.
I I I think we have to be careful of that one, Jason, and 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 probably we would we would look for some advice on that, because I believe that when they're returned to the postal service, they're returned directly to the clerk, and the clerk has control over that for the village election. I don't know about.
I don't think you I don't think you can have a drop box for them. I think it has to go through official post office.
Well, according to the the Nikon rulebook, they can be dropped off, certainly to me, the day of, so I thought that.
Yes, that directly to you, but we can't have a drop box in the vestibule for, for example, days before where they could drop them off.
Right.
And with the building with the building closed and people can't come in and hand them to you, Anita.
Right, right. I see what you're saying.
I wonder if you can get us a P O box just for that period of time specifically for this.
Probably could. But if they're just coming in the mail anyway, then I don't know how much that matters.
They can take them in and not pay the postage.
Right.
And they already got a mail through the mail anyhow, then it gets dropped off here, so.
Anyways, we we will we will encourage people effective tomorrow to to request absentee ballots and and continue to gather as much knowledge as we can and information about the prospect of of doing a full mailing. Does that work for everybody?
Sure.
By the fifteenth, we'll have to confirm the process. Complicated.
Complicated times.
Yeah.
I'll remind you, it is the the fifteenth is a holiday, so we're not having a meeting that night.
Thank you. You're right.
No, just a thought.
If the deadline's the fifteenth, it's probably really the twelfth.
Salt Lake County and New Jersey, now I don't know how this works in New York State, but they have locations with secure ballot drop box locations set up and open twenty four hours a day until eight P M on election day and less noted on both.
Well, let's not let's not use New Jersey as an example.
Salt Lake City was in there too.
We could ask the governor.
Well, we may be able to also get some guidance on that from Nikon. They they have quite a bit of information.
Right.
Any further discussion on that topic? I think we have a sense of direction here. We'll move on to old business. Under Main Street Reconstruction Project, I think the 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 significant item that we worked on this week, we've already acted on, which is the reverse betterment agreement. However, Art has been working with the the Development Commission has a a focus group or committee working on, it's part of the Main Street subgroup, working on a communications plan, which will be in place throughout the construction period, largely focused on keeping not just the Main Street business people, but also the community updated. Art, you want to comment on that?
Can everyone hear me through this mask? It is really in two different directions. One is a marketing standpoint, trying to let people know that the shops are still open, please come and do business with us. And the other one is, what's going on and how do I get there and how is party going to be available? And at this point, no one's really going to know all the details until after this meeting on the eighteenth, which will take probably a week to hammer out. And at that point, it's going to be a a living, breathing animal, or it'll be a forecast. We're planning on working here this week or this day, but you might run into a rock, or you might run into material that probably, and things will be changing, and there'll be people who are compiling an email list for the people who want to know this information and have it sent out to them on a daily basis. And that's really the biggest thing that's going on right now. But until we get more information, it's just trying to do everything they can in advance.
I think I think it's important to know that we're all waiting for the preconstruction meeting with the contractor. At that point, the contractor will be presenting their work schedule of of where they're starting and what dates they're working. So that I I think we're all anxious to have that. Certainly, this committee is too, because it's hard to come up with a final plan before we have that that information. And that date at the moment, the the preconstruction meeting is is scheduled for February twenty fifth. We anticipate we'll have their work schedule a few days before that. So again, as we get, I think, the next meeting this month, we'll, we should, we should be much more on top of on on top of that, so it's it's coming along. Anything else on Main Street or questions at this moment?
Kate called me, and I said, I think there should be two groups, like a broad overview for the people not affected daily, like shopkeepers and the residents, and then one specifically, more at least minimum weekly update for the people, shop owners and the residents.
Well, the shop owners, they're going to be kept up to date, probably. I mean, that's definite. That's different than the park twenty ounce of the public. It's like when we did the sewery line. We pretty much kept in touch with with all of them, gave them my card, who to call, what to ask questions. Well, that I that'll happen independently of what's going on, yeah.
Yeah. But it it is, the 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 plan, from what I picked up today, the plan is is broad enough to keep the entire community informed, especially of locations which may be on on. to keep the entire community informed, especially of locations which may be under, under construction on any given day. And, and people will be able to make decisions about how to use the traffic rerouting and bypass that will be in place any time there's actual work going on.
And we also have in the agreement, if I'm not mistaken, 72 hours notice will be given to a shop owner that your sidewalk's about to be taken out.
Or more importantly, we're connecting, we're reconnecting the water main into your building. And those of necessity will, will close off the water flow for what we hope is
A short period of time.
A very short period of time.
It'd be interesting.
It's coming up fast. Art, land use code base, nothing more there that I heard?
Land code and short-term rental really are one and the same right now. And I'm sorry for missing the last meeting when you had the presentation, but it was 3 hours and 15 minutes on the phone with technical support for a costume. Nightmare. I think the presentation, I haven't heard any feedback from anybody, but I think that went well. Dean did a good job presenting it. That's ready to be rolled out to the public probably in May, but at least we've had a chance for the village and town to hear what's going on and bring that into our decision. We're still handling now the last details before this is all done.
So the important information here is the group feels that this will be ready for public exposure, May, June, July. I think further thought that Dean conveyed to the, to our board at least at a work session was that they would look toward October maybe for board action that would adopt. And with that, it would be, the land use code would be effective as of January 1st, 2022. I think those are the key dates that we heard. But it's, it's continuing to be worked on, but I think the important thing will be the May, June, July, public viewing and and then reacting to whatever the outcomes from that are. Since we've already been through that with the short-term vacation rental regulations, I can anticipate that it will be similar experience. Local government communication plan, it looks to me like that has kind of wrapped around a lot of other things that are going on. Art?
Oh, yes. I mean, I think we, the first part of that is what we just talked about with the Main Street, the two groups. And the other focus that's still going on is the website work that's being done. There's not much to report, it's a lot of work that's going on with it. It doesn't sound like much, but it is a lot, a lot of time and effort.
Yeah, especially for Kate.
Yes.
Well, just having, having listened in on the committee meeting today for the, just the Main Street piece, it's very evident to me that a few people are doing a lot of homework and getting things organized together. I certainly would like to express my appreciation. Kate is, is a wealth of information and she's trying to adapt that to the resources that the village and town have available.
It's also worth noting that what's really happening is they're trying to do everything they can to have definite information. So they're trying to second guess what should be out there, what's out there, just so that when the time comes, not try and like catch up, they're a little ahead of the game, just have to insert dates. It's difficult work, it'd be a lot easier if you could wait until the time, but they're just trying to be proactive.
Anything else in the old business that anyone wishes to bring up? Kind of a fairly light agenda again tonight.
Yes, great.
Mayor, do you want to talk about the fire marshals tonight, or would you like to do that in the work session?
I think, I, I don't have the benefit of the conversation that you and Brian Kremer had.
Oh, okay. Well, I sent you an email this morning, it probably got lost in the millions of emails you get every day.
Hundreds.
I said million.
There are a lot of emails. We can, we can have a, it'll be new information to all of us, including the mayor. Let me just explain what is, is developed here. About a year ago, the code office spoke with us and indicated that there's roughly 108 properties with, where public access is involved in the community. And on different calendar schedules, they either require an annual inspection each year or in some cases, every third year. And the effort to get that done, the code office indicates is beyond their manpower or leading power ability, people power. So that they were asking the village to consider training some of our fire department personnel to be, be trained as building inspectors and to assist the code office in getting their obligation to do those inspections done. Those are, those are required inspections and it's been difficult, maybe almost impossible. They certainly haven't gotten them all done every year. So two of our employees in the fire department, both drivers, Justin Roy and Brady Hayes, have taken training and are trained building inspectors. And as you may recall, two meetings ago, we, we granted them authority to participate in a webinar where they will recertify, keep their certifications for that work current. The questions for the village in moving this forward were, number one, compensation, because they're already on the village payroll. Number two, liability. And then help me out here Janet, there was a third issue, oh, I know, a description as to how, for our labor agreement for that department, how any other member of that group would be able to qualify or be eligible for this type of work. So it contemplated that we would be drafting something in our labor agreement as we do for other events which are a little bit beyond the norm, like we have a stipend that we pay one of the drivers who does mechanical work. We have another stipend that we pay another driver to, to keep track of the required training for the department. And it struck me that this might fall into the same categories. However, we sent that to Janet and Brian Kremer to review those issues and come back with some recommendations. So Janet, you have the floor.
Okay, so I think this one is a little bit different than the one, the add-ons, if you will, that you just mentioned. Because the, but the duties of an inspector and fire marshal are outside of the job description for fire drivers. We, we would have to get that job description changed through the county civil service to up, upgrade it, if that's what it is, or modify it to add those duties. We probably could do that. Then we would have to negotiate with the union as this would be a term and condition of employment. And that may take some time. Those negotiations would certainly include compensation, terms of duty, I mean, would that be something that would be done as part of their regular shift? If they are already at the maximum number of hours per week working, would it be in addition to and therefore add some overtime or some different method of compensation? So the bottom line with regard to that option is that, that it can be done, but it's not going to be done overnight because there are all the hoops of civil service and the union contract to jump through. Another possibility could be that the town hire them as part-time workers, part-time code officers, on the theory that I don't think the town has, in that department, has a union contract. And then the village and town might be able to enter into a shared services agreement under which the village might pay the town some compensation for those services. That option is a lot simpler, could possibly be done quicker because it would just involve the village and the town agreeing, not having the county civil service and, and then the union all involved too. But in either of those cases, the issue of compensation would certainly come up, whether that would be some sort of pay per inspection or by the hour. And that's, of course, a ma, that'll be a major point of discussion, whether you want to bring it up on the, under the union umbrella or whether you want to bring it up under the, the town situation. That if you had an agreement with the town, it might also alleviate any issue of a village employee working, perhaps you'd call it under the direction of a town employee. And by that, I just mean working under the direction of the code enforcement office if, if they were, if we were going to keep them under that union option. The second option would obviate that problem because they would be the part-time employees of, of the town and perhaps depending on the payment arrangement, they wouldn't, you know, it wouldn't have to be including any benefits. So those, those are the two options, neither, neither one of which probably can happen tomorrow.
Has anyone spoken to Michael, Esteli or Jay about this?
Well, Mike has shown that proposed the fire marshal designation. And when I started looking at that, I, at least in New York State, the duty of a fire marshal is to investigate the origins of fire. It's nothing to do with building inspections. And since, you know, when you, when you get into labor law and our contracts, all of these things usually have a meaning that.
And I'm not sure that, given the definition under New York State law of the responsibility of a fire marshal, if, if our fire drivers are fire marshals, is that a potential for a conflict of interest? And I, from what I know of experience, most of the investigations of our fires are already handled by the county or by the state police.
No, the county has fire coordinators and we have, we have at least two in this district that I'm aware of.
So I like option two better, but the town has to buy in.
Yes.
Absolutely, and I guess, and I don't know whether Mike Ordesselli has raised the issue with the town that his office doesn't have the manpower at this point or the time to be able to doing the, to be able to do these inspections. I mean, he's, he's clearly talked to you about it, Mayor, but I don't know what he's done with the town or whether the town's concerned about having these inspections.
What conversation comes via the supervisor? And yes, the town does have full knowledge of what Mike is hoping to accomplish here. And again, there's no argument, it is, it is a function that is absolutely necessary. And it involves both the town and the village in terms of it. I think Mike's point of view was that the fire department is, is a budget that's funded both by the town and the village, although there's a difference in, in the relationships there. The town is contracting for service from the village and the budget is a village budget. So as, as Jay and I have discussed it on occasion, what, what looked fairly simple from Mike O's point of view was not, and is not quite so simple. And there is the issue of liability and how that would be dealt with in the event that there were a problem. And again, it's just my view that while we would support this activity, I think that it should be done under the code office's jurisdiction and they should be compensated by the code office for that work.
Yeah, and I, I think there'd have to be a question raised as to insurance coverage for these inspectors too.
Agreed. So, and again, the issue of, the issue that they might be doing these inspections on village time, I think is something that we could work out between the town and village because that fire budget, department budget is substantially supported by town as well as village. And I feel that that we could probably work out so that those inspections would get done during business hours. However, the other issues seem to me to be issues where, where we, if they're going to do this work, I agree that I think it, they should be clearly working under the direction of the code office. Because that's, that's, those, that, that is the office that has the obligation to carry out those inspections. Manpower, maybe we could work.
Well, that's also an issue. Last time I talked to the fire department, they don't have a lot of spare time. I mean, it's not like they can just put someone on these inspections. It may require, depending on how many inspections are ended up being, another person being put on there, so it takes a one and a half thousand.
And again, as I said, I think, I think there's, there's a platform where the town and the village can work on that reasonably. Again, I would remind everybody that it was only a dozen years ago when I came into office that Brad Jakes, who was then the head fire driver for the department, was very interested in having the fire department involved in building inspections because oftentimes that puts them inside a building before they have to go in to fight a fire itself and they may be able to offer, A, they'll have some knowledge of the contents of B, they might be able to avoid some of that.
But in that case, the fire drivers can't go in the buildings anyhow and hire back the volunteers that should be trained.
Right. Well, the fire drivers going into the building as inspectors is separate from going in for the fire.
But they can't, they're not allowed to go and fight fires on getting out.
They have to run trails.
Right. Although the, the proposed project does not involve fighting the fire itself. It's just, it's, it's just using them and their training.
Right, but I thought I misunderstood you then, and have them do the inspection so that when they fight the fire, they know what's in there. That doesn't apply to the fire drivers with volunteers. Drivers can go and fight a fire.
I, I fully, I understand that. I agree with your comments. It's just that the department and Brad, Brad had made a real point of the fact that he really wanted to see the department engaged in that kind of activity. This is a way where that might happen to some degree. Other comments?
So who's going to pursue Jay and/or Mike?
Well, the conversation between, between the mayor and the supervisor is pretty much ongoing at this point. The town really wants, they understand the obligation, so do we. We're looking for a suitable way to do it. But my reaching out to Janet and our labor council was to respond to the questions that they have responded to.
Okay.
So more work to be done on it, it's definitely not fully resolved. But my commitment to the supervisor was to see if we could bring this to a reasonable solution. Any, if there's no further discussion on that, the only other item I had on my agenda tonight is just to remind you of the Osable River the disabled river document to support the max grant fund they were seeking from us as well as from the town. I have that. It just came in over the weekend. We, Janet, we, I have agreement on the changes that you were recommending that were penciled in. And I think that should be on the next board agenda. We just have to refight that somewhat. It's finished.
Okay.
So we'll move on that. Commissioner reports? Anything up?
Can I bring up unresolved, the water meter issue? Long email stream, Janet made a comment. I believe she was the last one. Janet, what do you think should happen in regards to the water meters, the 75 meters that...
Well, why, I, we had a lot of input on Mindy's draft. Thank you, Mindy, because it's always easier for somebody to shoot at something than start it themselves. And you were the brave one to throw it out there. But the one concern that I had is that it says that the property owner has to pay for the meter and the DPW department will put it in. But it's dawned on me that there are instances where the DPW department cannot install the meter due to some issue. I think it's, has been pointed out that there was one property where the space, as it's presently configured, where a meter would go is just too small. So I, I would like to make sure that somehow, maybe just by adding a couple words, the DPW, where possible, will install it because there might be instances where we're going to have to tell somebody, you have to get a plumber in, you have to get a carpenter in, something. I remember back in the day when we had the process and we had that company come in and they were going to install meters in all the village homes, there were places where they couldn't install because there was a different in the si- difference in the size of the pipes. So there needed to be either reducers or expanders and we were not going to get into that. So I don't want to mislead the people when we give them the notice and they come back and say, well, you said you'd put it in and that's why we haven't gotten it in because you haven't done it. I think we have to have some statement in there acknowledging that we can only do it where it's possible. And if it's not possible, then they'll have to get their own people to install them. That was my last comment, I believe, Peter.
Okay. And will this serve as a second notice as far as the vacation rental law? And should Mike sign?
I think so. And I suggested that it be sent out both certified mail, return receipt requested. So we have a track record. And then also, I'm thinking that in each permit application, there's an email address. And maybe we should send it to each of the, send it by email. And we should also send it to the address or the email address for whoever these property owners have listed as their local contact.
Okay. So it should have Mindy's name on it and Mike Ordecelli?
No, it's, this is a local law and this is under the land use code. And Michael is the land use code, the CEO. I think his signature is all that's needed. Because it, what it is, it's a code violation. Pardon me?
Okay.
And I think we need a date. I think the date was blank in there. And we have to be sure to include in the letter the, which I haven't seen, but I'm sure you all have, is the list of the price list.
Yeah, I can send you a copy of that if you want.
Well, I don't need it. I just want to make sure it gets included in these letters. But I think because this is the second notice, I think we send it out all those ways so that nobody can say, no, we didn't know that, we didn't get it. And nobody can say, well, we're waiting for you to do it and then find out that we can't do it.
I think certified is important.
Yep. And I think email and I think sending it to the property manager, whoever they have as their contact person. I think we have all that information available in the permit applications. How many people are we talking about, Mindy? Seventy-five?
Well, there's seventy-five that are due to get the second letter. But since the original letter went out, we've gotten an updated list now. And there are total 475 permits that were issued. So the girls are going to go back through because when we did the original mailing, we only had 256 permits. So there were 162 letters that went out originally. There's 75 people that haven't responded. There's six that we can't get in to do them because they don't fit. And then there's 12 people who want us to wait because of COVID, which seems crazy because they're renting their house out to people, but whatever. That's up to Mike to decide what he wants to do in that case scenario.
But they paid the fee? They paid the...
No. Well, yes, they paid for the meter, but they don't want anybody to go in because of COVID.
Well, I agree, Mindy. They're renting their house and letting people in.
I know. So it seems like a moot point to me. But so between the 256 and the 475, we've got some more work. The girls are going through to decipher who needs a meter and who doesn't need a meter out of those people.
So there might be people who need the first notice?
Yes.
And, and where are we in terms, well, we don't know yet in terms of where we are in having installed what can be installed?
There were, well, there's 162 letters that went out and only 75 left that haven't been installed. Well, hang on.
Well, yeah, but now you've got all the new information. You don't know whether those...
Right.
Between the 400 and 200, how many of those don't have meters yet?
Well, we don't know that portion, but 69 meters out of the original 162 have been installed.
You say they're working on the rest of the list now?
Yeah, they just got it from, uh, last Thursday, so.
Okay. And Janet, you're going to call Mike then?
Whoa.
Somebody has to communicate all this to Mike.
The communication's gone back and forth. I can just submit a letter.
Why don't you, Mindy, if you don't mind, tomorrow, send me the latest draft of the letter?
Okay.
And then I will look at it and then I will send it to Mike, copy to everybody else with what we just spoke about, which is that how, to whom the letter should go, who should sign it, and how it should go. Does everybody agree with that?
So I'm going to send you a draft of the letter, but we still don't have a date.
Yeah, the board's got to decide what's a reasonable period of time to give these people. Now, remember, this is just to give the people the, to respond and pay the check. It's not to have the meter installed because, you know, we're doing those as time permits, right, Wendy?
So, so Mindy, and we're essentially saying some people haven't gotten their first notice?
Yes, because we just got the secondary.
We have two tiers of people here, Janet.
Yeah.
I hear that. But right now, our concern is getting the second notice out. We don't have the list to send the first notice to, but we do have a list to send the second notice to. And I think we should just concentrate on that one right now because obviously those people have not, have been given an opportunity that they haven't responded to.
Should we say March 1st?
Well, and I think if, if Mike can get the, if he can get the letters out this week, March 1st is reasonable. If he tells us he can't get them out till next week for whatever reason, I don't know what's reasonable. It sounds like we're, we were lacking information if we're going off a list that only had 200 and some people on it and there's really, now we hear there's 400. There's been, it seems to me there's been a lack of information updates so that we can keep current on this issue.
That shouldn't take long to figure out.
No, no. Sharon went through the first list really fast. It's just they have the upcoming billing, so they were trying to make sure everything was correct before it went out so we didn't have any issues this month.
So, Mindy, if you send me that, I'll, I'll get it to Mike tomorrow and ask him if he thinks he can get these letters out by Friday. And if he can, I mean, and we're talking, remember, letter, certified mail, return receipt requested, email, and also notice to the contact person, which doesn't have to be certified. So, and I'll, if he can get it out by Friday, we'll say March 1st. If it's going to be next week, I guess we'll have to say March 5th or the fall, whatever that Monday is.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I think we have consensus on that. And this, this, it was, this, this happens, even though the law was very clear, it actually happens because the application itself is, doesn't involve a person walking into the building. They were all, most of them are coming in electronically on the internet. And we have two different jurisdictions here in terms of interest. We have the code office issuing the permit. And then the second jurisdiction is the village office, the village who has an interest in getting the appropriate designation for water service.
I think it's going to be very interesting to get this updated list and see, see if that number jumps exponentially.
Yes, it will.
Because we know that most of the short-term rentals are in the village and most of the residences in the village did not have and do not have water meters.
That's correct.
So there may be lots more.
Yeah, and it isn't like it's 80/20. It's, it's a skew more in the village. So there was, what, 250 that are in the town? Vacation rentals, is that the number? I mean, it's not a huge amount, but it's not like the village is the most of the lawn. But I think they're saying it won't be a huge difference in the numbers if you go.
But pro-rata, probably it will go up the same, at least the same amount, we could expect, given...
Lots of them in the town are the condominiums and they have water meters. I think it's mostly single-family residences that are in the village that don't have meters, but...
And Pine Hill.
Will, will know that.
They're in the village.
They're in the village.
And the morning side drive, those, the ones up on the club, they don't have them either. And I think that's where they're running into issues. It's because the space is so small in there that they can't, they can't get in there. So...
Any thing else under commissioner reports? Peter, Art, Scott?
Do you, do you have any information on the tractor that went through the ice?
What I heard today was that, yeah, it was not a, it was not a town or municipal property. It was a, it was a piece of equipment that was apparently leased or rented from rental, the rental people. And I was told that the interesting thing is, when it went through the ice, that the thing that kept it from completely going down was the snow removal plower or blower on the, on the front of it caught the edge of the ice and held it up. Peter, you probably have a better knowledge than anybody.
I have it all. Me and six other guys.
We heard that they came out with some airbags and some wood timbers and basically they, they were able to ratchet it up and get it, get it back on, I guess what I'd call solid ice.
Like three quarters of the machine was in the water.
I guess my concern is, is did they have permission to be on the ice?
It was part of the Can-Am tournament, yes.
Who gave them permission? I don't remember us voting on it.
I think the answer is there. I think we've always assumed in the past, Scott, that Butch's people were doing that work as they would for the other skating rinks and the toboggan chutes. So I'm not sure anybody was aware of the fact, and maybe even Can-Am wasn't aware of the fact that they needed to request that permission.
Well, I think, I think we gave Can-Am permission to hold their pond hockey tournament this year. And I think in that, their application, in the past, I think it's been fairly well-known that they've had equipment out there clearing off the ice and making their rinks. So although I, I agree with you, Scott, that we didn't, we didn't say, you can have a machine, we've given them permission to clear off ice and have their pond hockey.
Yeah, just some food for thought for going forward.
Yeah, it is.
I don't know if the DEC was notified.
Yes, they were. And a gentleman was there Saturday night and then again Sunday morning. Two different people.
Any discharge that was noted? I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so, depending on...
Yeah, it didn't go all the way in, mostly.
And the town has also been clearing the ice for the toboggan chute and rinks, right? It isn't like they went out, town even doing there.
It's just the freak things. They...
Is it just like a hot area or a water pocket or...
When the, when the ice surface pushes down through the snow, it's, ice is an equilibrium, so the water has to come up. One of these huge, like a sinkhole. Anyway, bad luck.
At this, at this point, that pond hockey event is pushed off to the 26th to the 28th of the month and that presumes that they have ice. Butch, Butch is struggling with the same conditions on the lake. And I know he said to me the other day about the toboggan chute, the chutes are going to be open, but they may be sliding on snow as opposed to clean ice. And I suspect that's just what's happening.
Well, they have been, yeah.
Yeah. So the, the outrun isn't going to be nearly as far, which is probably a good thing. Anything else? The last item we have, I put it under correspondence, is a letter from Dynamic Environmental Associates. They are representing T-Mobile, who is apparently adding some telecommunications equipment to the ski jumps and just sent a letter out. They notified the village, they notified Essex County Planning, North Elba Historic, Essex County Historic, Adronic Park Agency and the general public via public notice. Just seeking any comment on any, anything that might relate to that facility as a historic resource and asking for a response. I just put it on the, on the agenda so you all could see it, if there were any specific comments. I did speak, we did speak with Mike Pratt and Mike indicated that there was really not much of anything that was going to change the appearance of the jumps. It's like other communications equipment out there, it's there, but you hardly notice it. So if there's any specific comment that we should hear, now's a good time to speak. Otherwise, I'll just indicate that the village acknowledges the letter and understands that it will not have a significant negative impact on the appearance. Something like that. Okay, we'll, we'll respond on that. Is there anything else to come before the board tonight? I noticed we have a couple of virtual visitors for the meeting tonight, other than board members. Is there any, any, I'll be happy to invite any comments. Should anyone wish to speak, just identify yourself. Should anyone wish to speak, just identify yourself, please.
Unmute, unmute yourself.
And unmute yourself.
Don't all be one.
If not, um, Scott, I guess we could, uh.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second, uh, Peter seconds, all in favor of adjournment?
All right.
All right.
We're, we're adjourned.
Thank you all.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, have a good evening.